Megan, can you hear us, Megan? Megan, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
So Megan, the planning board account was on, do you hear any feedback or any disturbance certain?
No, I think it's okay. I was skeptical, but great job, everyone. Sorry, had to micromanage remote IP from far. You know, one thing to note, I think, from the viewer perspective is that all the background noise, like any side comment gets picked up and kind of muffled everything. So that's just something to, you know, be considered on because I think it's a little different with this hour. It picks up on a lot of the background discussions.
So we are reconvening in open sessions. So good evening. This open meeting of the select board is being conducted in person and online at Town Hall. Some speakers on the agenda will be participating remotely and we will allow for the public to provide comments via Zoom. The board would like to hear public comments. If there is further action that is required by the board, the chair will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending on the comment, the board may, if they're able to, within the confines of the open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to meeting to further deliberate on the matter. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a currency to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. The agenda posted on the town's website identifies how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the meeting recording. All the materials for this meeting, except any exact possession materials, are available on Board Docs and we recommend that members of the public follow the agenda as posted on Board Docs unless the chair does otherwise. We are now going to turn over the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and fair conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please call until your name is called. If you're participating via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking and please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For your response, please rate until I get to the floor and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage importantly with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify them by yourself. After the members have spoken, I will afford public comments as follows. I'll first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once I have a list of all public commentators, I will call on each name and afford three minutes for comments. And public comments for public hearings will only be accepted in person for open meeting law. With that, I will take one item and open up for public comments before we move on to our joint meeting of the planning board. So the board would like to hear public comments. If there is further action that is required by the board, as I mentioned, we will add as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Are there any public comments this evening? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to our opening topic, which is a joint meeting of the planning board. And so I will pause here. Chris, I'll let you open your meeting up.
We'll open up this meeting of the planning board for the town later. The time is 7:02 and the date is July 26, 2022. All members are present here in the room today.
All right, thank you very much. So this is a joint meeting between the planning board and the development agreement, potential development agreement for two Wall 10th Street and two four six Powder Mill Road Development. We've had a task force of members of the planning board and the select board and town staff working hard on this one. I believe we have representation from the developers online as well. And Megan, would you mind giving us a high level overview? I know the select board has reviewed this last week and the planning board has had a chance to look at the documents. But can you just tee us up on the broad strokes and progress that the task force that brought this agreement to us today?
Sure, happy to. So when this project was first proposed to the select board, there was a lot of, you know, different features of what this project could be. And it included mixed use developments and included redevelopment of the two parcels on this key corner on the river. And so to, you know, make sure that the community and the select board really were going to be able to kind of see that vision come forth. One of the tools we decided to use was a development agreement. And so this development agreement, like you said, Jeff, was, you know, came out of a working group of two members of the planning board, two members of the select board. We worked closely with town council who's on here, Elizabeth Wyden. And we also worked with the developer to figure out what exactly they were looking to do and how we could kind of codify it in a document that we all agreed to. So some highlights to this are some of the infrastructure improvements that were agreed to for the intersection. There are some, you know, curbing that is failing, pedestrian accessibility. So, you know, the developer has agreed to make some improvements there. They're looking to do, I think, about 28 housing units, some commercial space. And they are looking to, I think those are the main highlights. Sorry, I think I covered it.
Can you just cover the bond that we discussed last time?
Oh, yeah, thank you. Yeah, that's the other big piece. So part of this is, you know, we struggled a little bit with what happens if this development falls through, right? And I know tonight, we're talking, right now, we're talking about the development agreement. But it, you know, to really think of this project holistically, there is also marijuana delivery that is tied to this corner that is interested in operating here. And so if the developer does not move forward with this project, it would be, you know, I believe, a disappointment to the town because we want to see this parcel developed. So to kind of put some stakes into this development agreement, the group came up with a $300,000 surety bond so that if the developer is unable to move forward with this project, that those funds would come back to the town. The town would also receive all the reports and studies that were done on the site. And that those funds, the idea for those funds to be used to promote the site and maybe do some site readiness work so that, you know, if for some reason this proposal is not feasible, you know, we could do some proactive economic development work to see what would be feasible and what would be possible here on this corner. You know, there was a lot of discussion about feasibility and what does that mean? And, you know, what if they're unable to do what they are hoping to do here? So we did include language that would have them do a cost estimate for the project. And then if for some reason, you know, a requirement or the economy required them to, you know, things were going to cost a certain percentage more than anticipated, then they would have the ability to back out of the project and still pay the bond. So, you know, and I feel like I'm focusing a little bit on, you know, worst case scenario here. But it is an important part of this agreement to talk about what, you know, what is the meat of this? And, you know, what happens if, worst case scenario, you know, this project doesn't come through?
It's risk management, very good. And can you just highlight the steps that this will go through after, if it gets approved tonight? What other boards it will have to go through?
Oh, sure. So after, you know, the select board in the planning board execute this document, there are a number of regulatory boards and committees that will see, you know, aspects of this project. And I think Bill Nemser, I believe, the first step would be for a special permit and site plan review at the planning board. And would also be going through conservation, probably around the same time. And it would go to the zoning board of appeals. I think, Bill, are there other boards that you can pick up that would go through?
Yes, I think that it would most likely end up during the process to go through in the form of housing trust. It would, I'm not sure if the zoning were appeals would be in, at this moment, from what we know about the project. It's potentially, but the, and it's just a conservation. I think that will pretty much cover everything right now from what we know.
And since you brought it up, what percentage of the units are planned to be afforded?
Seven of the 28 units.
All right, thank you. Chris, do you want to add anything before we open the floor to discussion?
I'm trying to think about this as a sort of a high level standpoint. The way that I saw the cadence of this proceed as it went through the joint sort of committee between the members of the planning board was that we were trying to find ways that could provide some guidance and certainty to the developer while also maintaining what we felt was necessary to highlight. And as I look at this development agreement at the moment, at least from a planning board's perspective, there's not much in here that I see that we will be conducting or agreeing to at risk. So what do I mean by that? I mean specifically that besides the stipulation under, I think it's section five, where it says no guarantees, which basically highlights that the developer will still need to go through the planning board and whatever boards and permits that are necessary. What I've laid out here in a number of details specifically under section two and section three, if you look at section two, the title is compliance with 9.4.5 of the major zoning files. We're just highlighting the compliance points. We are not agreeing to anything that would necessarily be outside of the standard sort of compliance of needing the requirements of section 9.4.5. So in a sense, I feel we are highlighting for the developer what he should or what the developer should expect, that team should expect. And I think that's going to be helpful for them. But it doesn't, to me, I don't read us as given much, you know, I don't see much at risk for us when I look at what we've through, what we have stipulated for our obligations.
Thank you. The select board didn't have a chance to discuss this a bit at our last meeting. So I think we're grateful for you to join us and we're appreciative to hear your perspective. So I don't think we need to go through any formal orders. So I think I will simply open the floor to any questions from members. So would anybody like to kick us off with any questions, comments, or concerns on the development agreement?
If we're, I know that Bill Crenshaw and Megan were discussing offline some, some of Bill Crenshaw's perspective. So I'd like to give them a chance to speak to those if they would be able to.
Sure. First thing I'd like to verify, development agreement references, Exhibit A, process, concept plan. Best I can tell, the documents were presented were exactly three different concept plans. So which was the one that the working group was considering?
That's a good question.
If I may add to that, I've expressed to this year many times that every time we meet with this particular plan, it changes. And just yesterday, as a matter of fact, we were presented yet another presentation. It's completely different than we've seen before, which raises a lot of issues relative to, and I know we're getting into them as we're discussing. But one of the discussions we had the last time is exiting, traversing a trap in and out of that parcel, especially along a practical place. Communications were at the time that, oh, don't worry about that because there's only going to be three or four cars going in for deliveries when they deliver marijuana to the warehouse. Well, now, in this iteration that we see yesterday, that's a main exit for not only for a marijuana issue, but apparently for some sort of a trattoria deli or something we've never seen before, as well as other issues with housing and residential. So this changes every single time. And one of my concerns is we're sitting here approving the development agreement on a plan. We have no idea what it's going to be.
So I do want to note, Dave, that you have brought that point up before. And some, actually many of the changes they made were in response to our comments, especially during the conversations last fall. I agree there are some changes, but I believe some of that is reacting to the board's desire for some of these changes. So I just want to make sure.
Well, I think it's important to know that one of our big discussions at the last meeting that we had was specifically about the exiting and entrance into that property. And you wouldn't want to improve my argument that, you know, this could be problematic because that intersection is extremely busy at certain times of the day. And you said, we're talking two or three trucks going in. Well, what we've been presented with tonight, Jeff, is that hell of a lot different than what you were talking about. Would you agree?
I would.
So therefore, it is, therefore, my point is valid. So please don't say that it's irrelevant or that it's been overly discussed when it's a brand new issue to see.
All right, I just want to say there's a history of changes. Not all of them are unfounded because many of the ones, you made it sound like there's a consistent behavior there, but many of the changes are things that we did ask for. However, I think there is a point that deserves to be brought up. And I want to check in, do we have representation from the developer here?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, good evening. Tim Hess from Studio C2 Architects. I see we've also got Attorney Gomes, who's been part of the team. Nick, I see you're still shot there. Are you with us live?
Yes, Mr. Chair, to respond to Mr. Hess, Nicholas Gomes, I am here.
Thanks. Do you represent the developer or do you represent UPA?
Mr. Chair, I represent UPA Incorporated, the company who is up next regarding the marijuana establishment. But on this project, I did assist in at least reviewing the development agreement, answering questions and the like. But I do treat my representation of the marijuana establishment as the primary on this project.
Thank you. And I will remind everybody that we're here to discuss the development agreement. The select board will be discussing the post-community agreement as our first agenda item after we finish our joint meeting with the planning board. Chris, I believe you would like to say something.
Thank you.
I'm still waiting for the answer.
Yeah, so that's what I'd like to get back to.
Sorry, Bill.
And I wanted to see if Megan could assist. As I recall, the reasoning for adding Exhibit A was that in the development agreement, we mentioned that the plans and the concepts here can change. We expect that the concepts may change over time. And then what we didn't want to do was have the development agreements be locked into a set of development plans. So I believe in this document, didn't we reference the concept plan and that once the concept plan does need to change based on purgatory engineering review, that we could go back and review some of the details in the development agreement? Isn't that the reasoning for having the concept plan in?
You know, I think I'm going to have to defer to Attorney Wyden on that one. I'm sorry, I don't recall that piece.
Well, I think the concept plan is required by section 9.4.5 for the development agreement. But there is language that allows for flexibility in what's approved based on any changes resulting from the planning board's review and approval and any subsequent changes from conservation or as required by permitting.
So the concept of having Exhibit A in here was so that we had a reference point of time?
Right.
But it was, yes, go ahead, sorry.
It is a reference so that you know what was contemplated in the agreement versus what's approved at final.
So it is a lot of change over time. I do want to try to get an answer to that. I don't have the answer to your question, Bill, and I don't know if Maggie does, but I just want to highlight that this concept plan is allowed to change over time. But I don't have the answer to your question.
All right, my question was, what was the working group looking at when it comes to the development agreement? Apparently, we don't know what they were looking at. My second question would be, what's the current concept plan? Because their first line of your surety section says that development, as presented through this life board, forms the basis for the town entering into this agreement. So it seems kind of important to understand what that development is. So can somebody clarify that?
Yeah, I think, are you referring to that? Because we had two different concept plans up on Board Docs. Is that, so I apologize for the confusion.
One has two, one document has two different concept plans and then there's a third.
The most recent one is the one that's labeled 2022, 722 Stack DA. So I apologize.
I don't know if that's the one the working group is looking at, but regardless, that's the most current version.
In some way, they were not, Bill, because they finalized this agreement before 7:22.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I might be able to. To be clear, the development agreement allows for these elements or concept plan to be placed in. It doesn't specify what has to be there, it's simply to establish, in this case, we're talking about the density of 28 units. We're talking about the general square footage and a general design to allow enough information to be memorialized to make the development agree. So I think, Bill, what I would say is that I wasn't with all the team meetings, but 28 units was clear going. The amount of retail space, the general amenities were all something that was determined that it was in town's best interest to have them in the concept plan or in the.
May I ask, 28 units is mandated or supposed, supposedly, in its, supposed in its rhythm? The planning board determines, or CONSCOM determines, the 28 units for whatever reason isn't appropriate.
No, no, no. No, maximum.
It's a maximum.
Right, so there would be a level of comfort for the board 24. Say, okay, the planning board may decide this doesn't work for eight years. It may, you know, whatever, it could decline or whatever, adjust. It would not go the other way, that would say, well, yeah, it should be 30 percents. So it was to establish a ceiling. That's Megan, I'm pretty much summing up what I think it was just one lifetime over there. And then the recognition was that as the current conditions may change or new facts may emerge, then all of a sudden, we don't want to tie each special permit granting authority's hands excessively by the development group. What I think the intent of the downtown real estate district was, is to set the level of standards at the maximum impact so that we can negotiate from there. Because there's going to be changes. But the idea was to make a level of practical memorializations within the document that would allow the team to move forward. That's what I hooked up in my.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think I might be able to share a point that might be helpful to Mr. Gavin's question.
Please go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you very much. The, I appreciate Mr. Gavin's concern about the circulation and the kind of the potential patterns and relationships between access and ingress, ingress and egress to and from the various components of the development. And from my vantage point, although discussion of those and the importance of reaching a resolution for those was sort of part and parcel and has been over the last several months, part and parcel to the conversation with the negotiating group for this development agreement. My understanding is that the real resolution of those things is the purview of the planning board and will be central to the site plan review for which the development agreement negotiating team is frankly not qualified, right? The planning board is the body uniquely qualified to judge whether the circulation is appropriate. And the representatives of that board to this negotiating made clear to the, you know, all parties at the table that now that would have to be resolved through site plan review as would, you know, numerous other aspects of the project. So this approval, if it were to proceed tonight or at any other point in the future, isn't a kind of sign off on a given circulation pattern. But really, from my vantage point, it's really kind of the gateway through which we are enabled to begin site plan review, the review of conservation commission, zoning board of appeals, those things, which my understanding is that, you know, Megan and Greg and Bill and others perhaps have determined that it would be the most proper sequence of events would be to get this development agreement, you know, buttoned up by at least the four corners. And then we kind of proceed in a more granular way with the appropriate bodies.
Thank you, Jeff.
So sorry to get long-winded, but I hope that's helpful.
Chris, would you mind giving us at a high level what we're trying to accomplish with this development agreement versus what will happen at a future special permit meeting for the planning boards?
Yes, and then I'd like to get back to the West Coast Conference, if that's all right.
Yes.
This development agreement has some highlights, as I said. Section two talks about the compliance with 9.4.5, which is one of our zoning bylaws that will guide us in how we're going to make decisions for special permits and site plan review. It also has section three, which has the developments itself. And what's in section four, necessary operations, these are items that that will be under the obligations of the developer itself. Now, varying site plan review, so as this proceeds to the planning board, we will accomplish the review of site plans, the site plan review. And we'll also look at this in terms of the downtown.
And we'll also look at this in terms of the downtown overlay district. And I believe that's section ten point six of the zoning bylaws. So there's a couple of sections that will be appropriate here. Again, we will do site plan review under section nine point four point five and we'll do, um, we'll do a determination of whether this matches the downtown overlay district goals and objectives under ten point six. Nine, nine point six. So that's what, that's what we will accomplish during site plan review. And then we'll make a determination about whether we believe that the developer and the applicant has met, you know, met the criteria for us to issue special permises. Does that, does that help clarify?
That's for me.
A question.
On that topic, did?
Yes, on the development, uh, item three, where you said the development. Uh, one of the things I noticed was that it was it said that it may, this project may include a, was it under that?
Losing audio.
Okay, sorry. That's just me mumbling. Uh, in one section, it says this project may include marijuana retail. Establishment. Is that marijuana retail establishment in addition to UPA? No. But UPA is not a marijuana retail establishment, correct?
Um, I, I, unless therefore it is.
Where's three P I? Where's your answer?
Can I, can I just put clarification pass from Attorney Lyden? I'm probably not seeing the last name of this. I'm sorry.
Three B I, three D one.
Is it, is a, is the proposed delivery operation considered retail?
Uh, yes.
So I.
It falls under the definition.
Right. And it's just this, it's just a generic term. It's not medical.
Sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing every once in a while, so.
Everyone in the room should remember to speak a little louder than normal, just so we can have the remote meeting pick it up. Uh, I do want to return to Mr. Cranshaw's commentary.
Uh, thanks. So next topic, I'm trying to understand the bounds of the development, uh, what would be acceptable. All parties. It was pointed out that it's a maximum of twenty-eight rental units. So we are multi-family, I guess that makes it could be anywhere from five to twenty-eight. That could still be okay by this agreement. But my question now is, so for the retail restaurant, there's three thousand of them. Is that a minimum? Maximum? Same for the pavilion, same for the number of parking spaces? Are those minimums, maximums? Whatever. Just guesses.
I don't have a good answer for you. You were looking at this as, and Megan can help correct me if I'm, if I'm inaccurate, but I believe we're looking at those numbers as best estimates.
Of, of this concept plan?
Of the general concept plan, yes. Now, we can't say this concept plan because this concept plan wasn't necessarily shared in the form prior to our last meeting. So there's that. Um, we need to talk more about that, you know, this, this plan that's being sold. Um, but generally, I believe those items under section three, approximately three thousand square feet, approximately five hundred square feet. Those were best estimates based on the, the concepts we were shown during meetings, during joint meetings and, uh, as it tied to the, that project concept as it was. So I don't know if this is a legal question or if there's something specific. Is there, is there a type of? Is there language that you would prefer to see changed?
I, I'm just trying to understand. I mean, obviously, the development is not going to be, be set up precise numbers ever. I'm just trying to understand that if it ends up being twice as much retail and half as much rental, does that still keep this agreement in force? Does that still meet the definition of allowed development in this agreement?
Now, Megan and, um, Attorney Lyden, uh, I, I believe we had an off-ramp designed into this development agreement, didn't we? That allowed us to go back and make changes as necessary.
Um, every, I believe it's in the, under the amendment clause. Let me just look.
This is the twenty-eight termination for infeasibility.
Well, it's, it's section thirteen modifications.
Section thirteen.
Yep. Well, that's saying that if everybody.
That's it.
Yes. My question is, what's the definition of, what's the balance of development proponents? That.
So what's proposed in here is what's allowable. It's not saying that that's the final of what will be developed. What, uh, what is in this agreement is what is allowed by the agreement.
So let's go and clarify. So are these other numbers A, B, C, E? Are those maximums or minimums?
Those would be maximums.
At. So you have odd that there's one. Straining up potential size of the pavilion. So pavilion could be five square feet. It's still okay. And retail could be one square feet still. And we can never have more than forty parking spaces, even if we need more.
No, what, I'm sorry. I'm just going to interrupt for a second. When this goes to the special permit granting authority, final decisions will be made regarding the floor plan and some of this is left to the special permit granting authority because it's required to be left to them by the zoning bylaw.
So I thought it would be that anything that is actually regulated by zoning by law really should not be in here because.
No, there are things that are in the zoning bylaw that are required to be in the development agreement. And there are things required by the zoning bylaw that are required to be decided in the special permit granting authority process.
I understand. There's only two things that are required to be in the development agreement.
No, that's, there's actually a list of things under nine point four point five that are required to be in a development agreement.
Uh, there are two things that are required to be in the development agreement. And then there's a list of things that are optional for the development.
Um.
Could you bring it up on screen? We could take a look.
I, I believe in this case, I think that longer list is may not be obligatory, as I recall, but I see.
May include, but shall not be limited to the following. Is that what you're talking about, three through sixteen?
I think that's what Bill is talking about, yes.
Correct. So it's clarified. There are only two things that are mandatory. So they definitely should come in. Yes. But I think all the other stuff is just getting in the way that will change later. It really has no place in this development agreement. It has no standing in the future. So what's the point?
Well, the point of the development agreement is to negotiate between the parties, what the town wants and what the developer is willing to provide. And so if we can get as much figured out beforehand in the agreement, then the select board can sign off on that prior to it going to the special permit granting authority.
Okay.
It's a vision for the town.
That actually touches.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I can offer one example that might be helpful for Mr. Cranshaw.
I think we'll continue with the board, board comments right now. Thank you, Tim.
So I bring up one, one thing. You said, you know, the board for the select to sign this book. I'm having a hard time understanding the legal basis for the planning board to sign this today, um, for project that has not yet actually even been submitted to the planning board. And also, also the fact.
I'm sorry, required.
The fact that nine four five requires a special permit. Just to understand, nine four five was a special provision for the developer to put in extra units if they commit to some other stuff. But that special permission has its own special permit. And that provision also requires a development agreement. But because it's a special permit, all that deliberation needs to be done in a public hearing process. So I think it's fine that we can use this to lay out the general blueprint of talking points. But we can't actually take action until we're into the public hearing process. Am I missing something?
Attorney Lyden, can you respond to that?
So this bylaw was developed in accordance with the laws and reviewed at town meeting and approved at town meeting in a public hearing. The town agreed to this. This is what's allowed in the development agreement. And this is a public meeting itself. The public has given input on this project and it's allowed to be decided in this meeting. These are the things that are allowed pursuant to the bylaw that was approved at town meeting.
I would ask when we ever had a public hearing on this project.
Well, I would ask if that's required, first of all, and not clear on that point right now.
The special permit requires.
The special permit, but not the development.
If the development agreement is part of the special permit.
So you're saying your preference for removing this would be to simply have the special permit and development agreement at the same time?
Yes. Well, they can't be concluded. They have to be concluded concurrently, but, I mean, yeah, we can talk about it. You know, everybody, I'm understanding what's needed to talk about it here. That's fine. The, the condition labor is very helpful, but it can't be finalized until we're in the hearing.
Why not?
Because a special permit requires a public hearing and this particular DA is part of a special permit.
Except this is required to be approved prior to the special permit being granted.
Oh, my God, no. I mean.
I think we have a few questions of order which we're not going to resolve tonight. So what I am going to suggest is that we continue on with discussion on the overall agreement, uh, what we want to see, if we want to see any changes. And then before, uh, our next relative meetings, we'll have to do some research on what is the, the proper flow according to the, the disagreement that we seem to have between, uh, uh, what is the proper order of the development agreement versus the special permit? So let's, let us continue on and discuss, uh, what our mutual vision is for this site, uh, and what we would like to see from the developers.
Would you share? It's even helpful. I can, I think I can close with.
Yes, if you, if you have it open in front of your, speak to that.
Yeah. The, the only time a, um, the development agreement for the, that, we're talking about the testing dollars, that, that trigger for to ensure there's affordable units within, uh, if we're, if we're just going to allocate bonus units. And the development agreement, uh, has to be before the planning board can issue the development agreement would have to be executed by both, this not board and planning. Okay. And typically the process is special permit occurs first. We go through the hearings, we get to a resolution and then towards the end, town, town staff starts working on a development agreement. That's how I've seen it.
Yeah, right. Because we understand what the project is so that then we can have an understanding of what needs we may have that are in addition to what we already are getting.
I totally acknowledge this little cart before the horse, for sure.
Yep.
Um, I do find this overall, this development agreement to be helpful because what it does is it lays out elements that we decided in, in the joint session that were valuable to highlight so that we can show a sort of roadmap for the developer towards success. And I do really appreciate that part of it. I, I get I, I understand the comments from Bill Cranshaw and others about some of the specificity here. I mean, and, and I, I believe I made this comment early on in our joint sort of development team that this tends to read more like an MOU to me than it does necessarily the development agreement. Um, and if there's a way to look at it more from an MOU standpoint, I think that maybe that's helpful here. I don't want to throw the whole thing out. I definitely don't want to throw the baby out with bathwater. But I do really appreciate how this highlights the sort of joint obligations ahead of time so that the developer may have a better chance of being successful. That I really love. So if we can continue to work towards that, I would appreciate it while also making sure that we're not, you know, can't govern ourselves in a way that's detrimental.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Go ahead. One comment I'd like to make relative specifically to asks of the community that eventually, whenever it is, gets there, I see nothing in here relative to sustainability, green, uh, aspect of this project. And at a minimum, given the future, we're talking about a.
Lost, lost audio. I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to speak out. I, I can't hear any of that.
Okay, my comment was, I didn't see anything in here relative to the sustainability and the green aspect of the project. For example, no electric charging stations for vehicles was identified as even a possibility. I believe fifty years from now, when the project, when this is going to still be there, that that's going to be a large portion of our transportation. And I think that it's time to think ahead and, and to see that it's not even been discussed. I think it should be included as mandated. What percentage? Who knows? But I think it should be mandated from the outset. Any other aspects of green, uh, buildings that we can have some control over relative to our ability uh, should also be included, uh, from, from a sustainability standpoint, from a green environment standpoint, should be included in any project that we are thinking about moving forward, especially if we're this early in, in the game. Uh, and we're being asked to provide what our thoughts are or what will allow us to get to yes. And for me, that's very important.
Thank you. You may.
Um, I just had, I just had a question about the, uh, I think it's the concept plan, uh, the seven twenty-two stack development agreement plan. So I'm just trying to understand, um, on page three, where you see the car, you know, it's lifted up and the cars are underneath. Is that, is that just the apartments or is the retail in there somewhere? Like, is, is the marijuana delivery? Because I can't find anything that looks like what we thought marijuana delivery building was going to be. So I'm just curious, did we replace the, that entire block? Or are you replacing that entire block?
Sorry.
Mr. Chair, could I address that question?
You may.
Thank you. Um, so I'm going to refer to the numbered document. I'm happy to share screens, uh, if the chair thinks that would be helpful. But if the question was on page three, I'm looking at a rendering with the BP gas station to the left and the proposed development consuming roughly the right half of the page. Just seeing is that the right sheet?
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, so, so what you see represented here is what we call a massing diagram. This is not a representation of the design elevations. This, you don't see a window represented here or any abstract representation of a window. You see only, uh, building mass. Um, and you recognize three floors of residential units above what we call a podium with cars below. Um, toward the left portion of the massing on the ground floor. Uh, we are representing retail units in that location. If we flip to, that's page four, page five, six, seven, and I'm just looking for the best representation that would allow us to see the marijuana facility. So if, if we flip, have you got hard copy there?
No.
At your desk?
No.
We do not.
Is it, is it not, is it on two? If you look at an overhead, isn't it to the rear adjacent to?
Yeah, I was going to say two, one, it's present in one and two.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, um, if you're at two, the marijuana facility is, um, um, I'm going to use as a landmark that outdoor terrace with a koi pond on it. Guessing that might be recognizable. So immediately toward the bottom of the page is a footprint about 1,500 square feet. To the right side of the page would be the access, vehicular access. And that, that footprint for the marijuana facility fundamentally comprises a garage where the delivery vehicles would enter and be loaded and then exit. And then there's a second floor, identical footprint directly above it, same square footage minus the stair, which would be office administrative and other aspects, other functional aspects of the marijuana facility. So it's present there. It's, it's a little bit less apparent in the renderings. I would offer primarily because the renderings are representing views from public ways and views that that would be more apparent and more prominent. And those, you know, there's a far greater kind of visibility and access emphasis on the cafe and the outdoor terrace. And I believe Megan may have forgotten to mention the Riverview Pavilion. That's another kind of important component of the project. At any rate, you can imagine why we might have decided that those should be a little more, a little more visible and a little bit more kind of public facing. And there's not really, we didn't see any mutual benefit either for the marijuana facility or for the public in having any great, you know, view of that facility.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
So, yeah, and that was why, I mean, the reason that I asked it because obviously we're going to be asked again to vote on or to discuss the post community agreement, which is the marijuana facility, which we still don't know where it's going to look. Which is funny, but the other thing that I wanted to bring up was, and it does speak to the difference between the development agreement or the proposal, which is the 40 odd cars in that, in that map. And then in our, in our HCA for the marijuana, it says that only three delivery vehicles shall be permitted to park on the parking lot. So I think that was, that's part of the sticking issue. And I understand that there's a lot of different pieces that are going into this and there's a lot to consider. But I think the whole point of we weren't gonna, it was not going to be that congested. And I understand that someone in planning said that that's not our purview and I understand. Or Mash, whoever it was, said it was not our purview. And I understand that part. However, we're making a decision on a post community agreement with the intent that it would only be typically six cars coming in and out of that place at an absolute maximum. And now it looks like that's completely different. So that was kind of my two cents of seeing all of this.
But do you want to get back to Bill and your line of questioning to see if you've had continuation, but I do want to note.
No, I'm good, I'm good.
I do want to note the time and keeping on. Here's his comments earlier about the differences between level of detail and special permit and high level vision that we're attempting to come to a common vision on here in the development.
Please, I just wanted to let up to any other members of the planning board provide comments. Natalie, can you?
The one that I had note of was, I just wanted to make clear that developer meeting with the major affordable housing trust to explore the possibility of a below 60% AMI unit is important to me. So I hope that can be interchanged and considered as carefully as possible.
We discussed trying to, we wanted to stipulate that in the agreement, but we felt that it may have been very difficult to do so, but yes.
For sure. I understand that the definition of affordable at 80% is what we are working with. But I appreciate the inclusion of that because it is important and identified in many town documents that have been.
I got no audio, none.
Where the?
Sorry, this hybrid is, we're really struggling to hear.
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to make it clear that I appreciate the inclusion of consideration of a below 60% AMI unit in terms of below income housing. I know that 80% is the definition and I appreciate serious consideration of a unit that would help us increase our very low income housing in town.
Thank you. Other comments?
I would just add to that, that we also have the need for three bedroom affordable housing units.
Could you speak up, please, and could you direct it towards the microphone? Thank you.
We also have the need in town for three bedroom affordable housing units. So we are hopeful that some consideration can be given to that lead as well when the actual things come in.
Three bedroom units. Thank you.
Can I quickly respond to Bob's comment relative to three bedroom?
You may.
And I don't have any concern. I agree with you. My news on this particular project, you can do a three bedroom unit. The 28 units we were talking about is the maximum earlier is going to be down to seven very quickly. And then it becomes, is the project relative to its value to our community drawing people, which is what I believe is the importance of downtown residences or apartments downtown is getting people downtown. So volume is better than number of bedrooms, although I agree with your assessment on the concern relative to association, social log.
One of the things, one of the opportunities we see of this project is that, you know, it will be available. So it will be accessible. So, you know, people who are in chairs and need the ability to, you know, live places, there's not a lot of accessible housing. And so to the extent that we can create it, we think it should be considered as part of the process.
Any comments from select board members?
Yeah, I have a comment just having said on the group that working in development agreement. I agree with David and Justine as well that the target keeps changing and the plans that we keep looking at keep changing. So although I'm comfortable with the development agreement that we built in a, in even given some consideration to the comments and concerns that, you know, Crenshaw had and we guys at the planning board's perspective. I'm not ready to agree to anything because I don't know what I'm, what we're looking at. Everything has changed again and this does not look like anything that resides in my, my history of documents from, from the developer, what we're looking at tonight. So if and when will we see something that we can expect to be relatively similar to what we can expect to see being built, that we can apply to this development agreement to move forward?
Armit?
I kind of agree with Chris because we were blindsided with this latest version. So we're not aware of this version until this day. And everything we worked on and agreed upon was based on the feedback we were giving to them to come back to us with different rendering, different design, different, you know. So I don't understand why it changed again. For, you know, tonight.
Any other comments from the two boards? Mr. Chair, how do you want to move forward with this item? Do you want to?
It seems that there's some items to resolve. And three I had minus one being the notion of what is the concept plan as it relates to the development agreement? There's some work to be done there. I, I would like to see if maybe Megan and others in staff could have a discussion with the applicant afterwards later this week to see if maybe this is more appropriate to have this be more of a memorandum of understanding than it is a development agreement. I, like I said, I do want to lay out a path for success for this applicant. And if that is what is going to help the applicant out, then I'm fine with thinking about this more as an MOU. But I don't, I don't want to speak for the applicant. I don't want to speak for our legal counsel. I don't want to speak for staff on that. I, I just ask that that idea gets explored because that may help resolve some of the comments I see. But if not, then back to the development agreement, Bill and staff, I see that we need to work out concept plan and get that circulated so that it's understood what attachment or exhibit A is, is going to be included in this as an exhibit to this development agreement. Section three has numbers of maxims that Bill Crenshaw pointed out. We can talk more about maybe changing the language up so that it's not so specific. Again, I do want to give guidance for, for success, but I understand the concerns about specificity. So I think we can look more into that. And the third one is, you know, is it appropriate for the planning board to be signing at this time? Because the typical guidance is that development agreements get signed once a special permit has been, or the applicant has engaged in a special permit process, which we have not yet engaged. So I think that is a valid question. I absolutely don't know the answer to. Those are my three, if you're taking a look sometimes.
We have one question from Armit. So to your point, Chris, is it possible, I mean, maybe Bill or Megan or the attorney could answer for a mental understanding as opposed to, because I kind of like that idea.
It's a concept and.
I'm just saying whether or not that is something we could.
We can explore that now if, if the select board chooses to use that time as necessary. Again, I just, I don't know all the ins and outs of that.
I mean, it's just.
I think it would be better to, to pause the conversation and do some research on, on what the implications that would be rather than having an open discussion without the members having had a time to take a look at that.
There, if I may.
I'm sorry. Yes, Attorney Lighten?
Um, I just want to reiterate that the development agreement is required by section 9.4.5. An MOA wouldn't satisfy that requirement.
Yes. So it's the timing of that relative to the special permit. And so I think that an MOU would be in addition to a development agreement that would be later is what you're proposing.
That would just spitball on this? Yes, it would be an MOU now and obviously, thank you, thank you, Attorney Lighten, a development agreement. Later on, once, once special permit process is engaged to understand the details of that. Does that make better sense, Attorney Lighten?
I think it's possible that it could be done so long as the development agreement is executed prior to the granting of a special permit.
Yes, yes, we, I think we got to that particular point. Yes. And again, this is just concept. I'm not, I'm not stating for the record that this is my position. I'm just exploring this concept.
And the one other question is, would the MOU allow the select board to execute on the HCA in advance of the development agreement? Which I think we'll need to talk about. But will also be a part of the task force that will answer the questions that we brought up in that Chris was.
Please continue.
Yeah, my comment to that, Jeff, would be, you know, from my perspective, and I don't know about the rest, but from my perspective, since we started this conversation on the HCA.
Can you speak up?
From my perspective, since we began the conversation on UPA and, and then that it tied in with this development. So I'm not comfortable with moving forward with UPA as a, as an HCA because, and I know we're, we're moving ahead to the next conversation, but it ties into this because my concern is that parcel of land and how it, how it will develop itself in the event we approve the HCA and then what we all want to have happen there, a nice development that enhances our downtown relative to residences and mixed use, does not come to fruition. We're now stuck with a warehouse and a main intersection. So my belief is that unfortunately, because of the way it's been presented to us, that UPA and that business is tied in, you know, without any, without any way to separate them to this development unless UPA wants to move somewhere else in town, which I presented to them long ago and they don't want to do. So that's my concern. And so I'm not comfortable with, with moving forward with an HCA because I think it's tied in to how we develop our community.
That's why we try to get some specificity in the development agreement. Does that concern?
I understand that. Yeah.
Yeah, so that's why we laid out those items so that it could help this board here, the select board, have assurances on what would occur if you engage in an HCA. So that's why the specificity.
And I understand that. The concerning part, and I'm not yelling, I'm doing this. Concerning part is that to Justine's point earlier, to my point earlier, to Chris's point, to Armit's point, the goalpost keep moving as to what we would get if we don't get the development that we, that, that we're talking about. So we can say that it will look like this or it will be this, but we have no guarantees until we have that, that development agreement signed for that project, for that location. Because otherwise, UPA, if we agree to an HCA, can do whatever the heck they want because they've got an HCA agreement that allows them to build for that location. And they told us the first meeting that we hear, they were planning on doing nothing to that project. And that does nothing to enhance our community.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair.
Brief, Tim.
Thank you. If I may, I just want to try and understand, I've heard reference from several folks in the room tonight about being sort of caught off guard by a scheme tonight that they hadn't seen before. And I'm just confused by the comment. The scheme that we submitted to Megan the other day was developed on April 26, so a full 90 days ago and has not evolved since then. We've made new views. You know, we put, we put different cameras in the same model to generate views in an effort to make it more legible. It seems like that's probably backfired. But the scheme has not changed. And I'm, and I, if, if you can indulge me, I would just ask Megan, and I think Megan, you are either officially or acting as the chair of that negotiating group. From your vantage point or other members that have been with us over these last months, does it look to you like the scheme has changed?
Megan, you may answer.
I'm sorry. Yes, I mean, no, I think the, I was, I guess to speak for myself, you know, and I have been very involved in this. So I'm, I'm looking at it on a rope, on a regular basis. But I would say I wasn't surprised by the rendering. It was similar to what I have seen in town.
And I think the challenge is the renderings are not the binding part of this. It's the development agreement that we want to focus on. The rendering should help us visualize what we're seeing. But there is the outstanding question about the concept plan and making sure we're clear on that if it's attached to the development agreement through to the day. So I do agree on the need to be specific about that particular item. Okay. Any final commentary before we close the session?
I'd like to ask a question.
Yes, please, please.
As I'm going to be, part of my job is going to be advising boards going forward, I think is somewhat, I think we have to determine what the level of detail we want to include in these negotiations. Because let's be clear, we've never done a health, a post community agreement in conjunction with these. This is a first. But we also know that whether it's an MOA or it's a development agreement, there are certain aspects in there to make the project predictable for all involved to ensure the town has identified clearly what the goals are they're trying to achieve this project. If it's a formal housing, if it's a public space, if it's things like mixed use, we know this is a mixed use project coming in. There are already contained in the downtown normally district regulations. There are portions of certain allocations of uses. We know in general what. We know in general what it is, but I would really benefit from some guidance of how much detail both boards would like me to help incorporate into the script. Because we started at one point from very little detail. Then we got into, now we're in a concept. Not, not elements to go into development, we're in a concept. I think personally, the concept plan, that makes total sense, I get it. But I just want to know what, you know, what scope both boards would like me to assist wherever I can to. Project, I'm not clear.
So I think part of that is going to flow from the order of operations where we look at whether or not this is an MOU transitioning into a development agreement slash HCA. So I think, I think we need to do a little bit of research on the point of order. And once we align on that, and I'm hoping the task force will, will drive this, we can, at each of those steps, whatever those steps are, come up with a level of detail. And I'm hoping we can do this relatively quickly for the outline part so that the boards can discuss independently what the expectations are in terms of level of detail in the order of operations from these. So I think, I think possibly to have that discussion right now, we'll go back into a circle. So I appreciate your frustration and not having an answer right now, but I'm not sure it's something that, the continued joint meeting is supposed to do until the task force takes some time. It reevaluates the overall approach and then we can come back to both boards and have that question answered. Thank you, Chris, do you have anything to add to that, or does that sound logical to you?
That sounds reasonable. And the thing I would add is that this development agreement was engaged because we wanted to tie it to the HCA, which I thought was a very reasonable, thoughtful idea. So when I heard that, I thought it was a good idea to do so because of the assurance, assurances that we would provide. I think the conflict here is, you know, level of detail helps. The more detail we have in this, the more assurances we have at the HCA that need to sign. The less detail we have provides, but at the same time, when we have more detail in here, it does provide a little bit of conflict or friction when it comes to the planning board. So it's just about maybe finding that balance, I guess. But we just have to resolve those conflicts. So, but it does start with connecting the two agreements, the HCA and the development agreement. And you just got to find the right level of detail that we can be to, I think we can do that.
I, I, I believe you're correct. I also just want to note that we will, when we do the development agreement and the HCA, if, if we decide to afford on that, be putting some trust into the planning board when it then goes to the special permit process. And so we, we don't have control over every single detail there.
Yes, you're going to have to trust us.
Yes, I know, but I just wanted to recognize that we're not at the select board level with the development agreement working out, you know, exactly where, where every single marketing spot will lie.
We cannot, we cannot. We do that, we need a special, we need an application to review first.
However, the broad, the broad strokes is something that we need to get to and that, that proves some very legitimate concern that, that fits tonight. So, once again, I'll pause and see if there's any final comments, but I think we're good, so I believe, yes.
I was just going to say, I wanted to make it clear, I think that a lot of the issues, yes, the development section kind of switches on our planning brains, and I think that's part of what's going on. I do think that the work that has been done about the affordable units and the clarifications about everything and the pavilion, it's all, I, it's going in the right direction, and I want to make it clear that I think there's a lot of great work at that time.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. And I think the last thing anybody wants is a vacant property that sits there for years and years as well. So I think we're, you see that goal, but I think there's, there's two parallel lines of thought. One is the, the order in which we get to that, and then two are some of the considerations such as affordability and traffic concerns that we want to make sure are addressed from the property. So thanks, thank you for that reminder. All right, I don't believe either of us are planning on closing the meetings, I think you're going to reconvene downstairs and continue your meeting, so I will.
Yes. Mr. Chair, if I may, on the Zoom. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Gomes, hold on, Mr. Gomes, we will be discussing the HCA very, I assume briefly in just a moment. So if your comments is relevant to that, I'll ask you to hold. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, I do have a point of clarification, I think when I couldn't hear you earlier regarding Greg's question on the marijuana retail establishment versus delivery operator. I tried to look while you were speaking about what was being referenced, and now I understand what the question was. And a retail establishment is not a delivery oper, I mean, a delivery operator is not a retail establishment. And so I see what you were referencing with the, the typo and the, the small i under three. And we'll make sure that that's fixed.
We'll need to fix that in the agreement. All right, the planning board is going to take a ten minute recess.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just one more point.
I think we're splitting Tim, Tim briefly, very briefly.
Thank you so much, Mr. Crenshaw asked a question about what was maximums and what was minimums today. And I think it's important to recognize that under element number three, development, spells out quite clearly maximum of twenty eight units, minimum of seven affordable, it doesn't say minimum of twenty five percent affordable. So if the developer were to build seven units, they would all have to be affordable, and the developer cannot build six units.
That's good to know, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Chair, Planning Board, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I need like two minutes to kind of, yes, we're.
We'll all pretend to be you.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. That was nice.
Should see my console fully.
Bring downstairs to panel with the, the link posted on the agenda, so if you're interested in the rest of the team, we're.
Okay, I thought I was on the planning board agenda, so I'll try again.
I'll come back up for this.
All right, this is no longer the joint meeting of the planning board, this is now only the select board.
Oh, thanks, Becky. That's a good, yeah, you said it right there, it's perfect, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I just gotta, I don't know what I gotta do, but I gotta do it. Yeah, ready.
Yes. Yeah, cut it down from like twelve pages to like eleven pages.
Ah, Jesus.
Listen, I'm still, I'm still working.
You have failed.
I'm still working, I was supposed to have it already last night, and I definitely didn't, nobody seems to care. Did you do it last time?
Yeah. All right, because I did, all I did last time is I just changed the number. It's like, oh, okay, it used to be X housing units and I.
You'll like, you'll like this. I'm, so you have the, the updated list with the current AMI for eighty percent of the dollars. I got it, yes, I have it in there, I'm also putting sixty percent in, thirty percent in, just so that they look at it and they say, oh, look, wow.
But you're doing it for, it depends on housing.
Yes, I'm putting in one for four, but one for four percent.
I printed out all of our stuff.
I might just.
Yeah, that was. These are the, and then one of these for everybody and then one of those. They're bills, they're those recent arrangements.
Really?
Thank you.
They're exploring, it says lower than sixty, I know because I read it three times before, I said it out loud.
Oh, really, okay, I, I just rented this.
No, it says lower. I know, I don't know why, they could just.
But all the, all the same is, I would do it if. And last remark, I love it.
Oh, I can imagine.
Oh, yes, but they.
They have to. They have fourteen.
Chris.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put, um. Chris, I'm gonna, it's probably easiest if I leave it on this, it's not that it's good of pictures when you get there, but art is this conversation here. And I'll put Hootie over there, so that's fine, make it easy as long as we're compliant, I'm happy to. Yeah, it's recording, so. Yeah. So let's, let's, what is this?
What is this?
I passed out the conversation. That's an extra camera that we thought we were going to need tonight and. Oh, I know what to do. Should we bring one more chair over here? Should we bring one more chair here? And then I can just put it right here. And Hootie can sit there.
That's fine.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Because you'll be sitting there. Stop the recording, let me make sure. Stop giving one second there.
Yeah.
I appreciate this, it's a big for that.
Well, you see, I turned it on, I got the, the little, uh, chart that's.
Chart.
Yeah. There's a, there's a, well, you have to present. But yeah, you have this. Oh, man.
They have an agenda to change that.
But, well, more or less, you know, we got the. That what? Hey Brad, oh, good, this is good, Brad, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now, Bill. I, I could hear you, can you hear me?
Yeah, okay, so Chris, we are confirmed, we have a live one out there and the ZDA member knows, so they have pulled us, they can hear us. And give me one second.
I can on the laptop. Maybe we're, we're going on a very patient tonight.
You, you want to go ahead and start, and I just cleaned up, I got a couple things and, okay, you start, you guys. You all have the handouts there and Bill is going to lead the class.
Bill, can you confirm that we're recording?
We, we. Yes, I can.
We're, we are back from recess for the planning board meeting of the town mayor on July twenty sixth, two thousand twenty-two, and the time is eight twenty-two PM. Did I, did I rejoin us correctly, Jim?
Yeah, that's exactly the time.
I did, yes, yes. All right, we concluded item one, which was the joint meeting. Say if there are thoughts on that for another day. Election of planning board chair, and I've seen vice chairs, correct? Does anyone want to be chair for the next year?
Yes, you do, I nominate the first to continue as our chairman, I'm very proud to serve him as the chairman.
I'll second Chris's nomination.
Thank you guys.
I move that we close the nominations.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Yeah, you have to leave this proceeding, so I don't know how to do this.
All, I'll take care of it. All those in favor of Chris being the chairman for the next fiscal year, please say aye. And raise your hand and wave it.
Okay.
For the record, that was unanimous?
Yes.
With Chris. He wasn't here right now.
Yes, I would like to nominate that Bob Brown is the vice chairman.
Does anyone have an interest in vice chair? Does that bother you about this?
Yeah.
I have an interest in being alternate.
I'll second, I'll second Bob's nomination as vice chair.
On favor of Bob being vice chair, Bob, are you okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Okay, all right, all right.
Yeah, he voted himself.
On favor, I, all right, so that's unanimous.
Unanimous.
For Bob Brown as vice chair.
Good. I congratulate both of you for deciding to serve.
Did I mention that I'm not available Tuesday nights anymore? Not even, I didn't mention that yet.
Does anybody want to hear a motion to move the meeting to Wednesday night? Actually, I guess not.
I, I'm slightly joking, but I have to take my, I'm taking graduate courses, finish my degree. And my, my requirement this coming fall semester ends at seven ten. So from September to beginning of December, I'm not available until about seven fifty.
We can stop the meeting and, as I said, it's a person that could be a month. Jonathan stopped the meeting, we can stop, tell them through the routine, then we show up and just transfer. Is that okay with everyone if we did it like?
So the discussion for tonight's. Okay, so item four says discussion on the draft development agreement. And I follow the various amendments that we've been discussing. Does anyone have any consideration, does anyone want to discuss the development? Item four is closed. Item five, which is the discussions of. Approval of even minutes for June twenty eighth. On the board. Jim has for approval, I will second approval. Any discussions or corrections? Any discussions or corrections? I looked at what we used before. There was, uh, one step change. Build sense of comments. So I mark this on one point one. So this is, this is ads of.
My phone was. Tom Parkout. He was someone. Yeah, on basis of this.
And that you're gonna have to load it. So all the fair to complete meeting minutes for June twenty-eighth. Five zero to approve the meeting minutes. All right. Bill Mendrick, Bill Prinshaw, help the help you advise to proceed with this discussion.
Uh. Let's do that then. Yes, one choose, uh, body art. But I guess the big point is, you know, there's going to be a special time in. October. And. Blackboard's timeline requires everything to be figured out. So if we want to make any zoning final changes. We talked about three of them. One, we just kind of mentioned a little bit last time was. Body art section that we had in our current bylaw, which is very restricted. Fires special permit, it's only allowed in business, it's not allowed downtown, it's not allowed within a hundred feet. Well, unit, which is really hard to find because you always have these weird little apartments. And my personal feeling is, you know. Back in the day when that those restrictions were put in place, when everybody thought that we'd have some parlor, then we'd be overrun with motorcycle. And not really the case anymore. And Bill Dumsers also pointed out that the definition of body art has evolved over the years. So some simple things like. Extensively in high grounds. Counting body art, they don't allow it. So. I'm thinking that we. We make an effort to change that section that could. Pretty much allowable like any other personal service.
Why did we have to mention it at all?
Um.
It's a good point.
If we remove the entire section, what does that do? Well, then I think the problem there, Tim.
You know.
Is that, um, with body art, it it is the health, Board of Health.
You have lots of stuff.
Oh, no, 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 no. Yep, that's true. Uh, Board of Health and, um. That's a bad idea. But, yeah, so the the, uh, if we took it out. In in our use table. Omission is, it means it's not allowed. So if if we couldn't, if it didn't fall under any other category. And we took it out, I think what would happen is that it is its own category because of the the. Protocol with it.
Well, can we add it to the list of all the things and eliminate having.
Maybe I I I I'll check. Yeah, sure. If that's what the board likes, I could. Okay, okay. So what what I think that's a great point. Um, so we'll say, do we? If we need a category. And if we don't have a category, does that mean it's prohibited or? Right, okay.
Well, I'm not sure if we need it. I mean, I assume we'll we'll still have it on the use table. We just don't need a separate section in the zoning bylaw. Specifics about it because that section says, you know, these hours of operation. All this stuff is like, whatever, you know, Board of Health.
Oh, I misunderstood. Is that what you guys, that makes, okay, so you're saying that we would keep it in the use table?
Keep it in use table, but not as a separate item.
I'll double check. Okay.
I would. We could treat it as a. House. Whatever.
There's a lot of salons now that are doing permanent eyeliner, permanent eyebrows. They're doing, um. Permanent, like, hair.
And the Board of Health already deals with salons, right?
Right.
So, yeah, just prove it in December, you know.
Have a salon. They they have their own tattoo specialist.
Nail nail things, maybe probably also deal with the Board of Health. The Board of Health probably also has to do whatever they do to make sure they're.
Right, and they can set up their own. They must have their own, right?
And I'm sure that also the 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 tattoo body art always do the same thing, but most women that are there that day and, you know. Oh, do my eyebrows. They'll have something there for the eyebrows.
Right. So would the board be comfortable? The the last couple days have been bonkers, so I apologize. I haven't, um, been as attentive to the the pilots, but would the board be okay then if I took a crack? I'll get this information. About the body art and if I we I took a crack at just. Eliminating, preparing a a draft where we eliminated the category of body art. Left it in the table. I can bring it to you guys at the next meeting and then because we're gonna run out of time. Bill, I think you all have the calendar. I'm afraid that we're gonna run out of time. Um.
That would work though.
Okay, so I'll I'll try to do that and I'll circulate it first. Can we be a little more specific here? So the use table I have here says body arts, art establishments. Are a no except for the B and I, which I believe is a business in the. Industrial. Industrial districts. And that says P B, meaning it goes to.
Right. It works special.
You still want a special term or not? So let's talk, let's talk first, let's talk about that. Do we, for the first, for the use table? Do we walk, bring down its business and industrial for planning board?
I wouldn't want it to be consistent with whatever we do for nail products.
Okay, so let's look at.
Or whatever.
Hmm. Well.
Personal services?
Yeah, I'm looking.
Spa.
Spa?
Get a spa. I know some of you guys are in the spa. Their chest is in the spa.
It's rude.
Yeah, but like, don't we have this for like, um. Like home hair salons? What, where's that?
Home hair salons are in the other janitorial laws that were.
That's there.
But hair salons.
All right, hair salons. Where do we allow barbers?
That's what I'm looking for.
Ah, all right. Nobody kept their.
So, as a matter of fact.
So, I don't actually, oh, here it is. Um, maybe it's clinic, clinic, healthcare facility, ancillary uses?
No, because that's not allowed in.
No, um, business or professional office? No.
Business.
I know. General, personal, oh, general or personal service establishment.
Yes.
So that is a yes under business. It's C B central business and.
H.
H C I. So when we wanted, so we're saying that you'd want me to change it to. We would add it at.
We would match the personal.
General or personal service establishment. Okay, so we're gonna match the uses with that, including the approvals by the.
Yeah.
The special, okay. And would you want, um? So just just to be clear, that means it's the business district, the central business district and the H C I.
They were just.
However, the body establishment that is written also included the industrial. Is there?
We don't have a lot left.
Yeah.
I could see taking it out of that.
Wait, what's industrial is the mill, right?
No, this mill is H C I.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Yeah.
Right here. All the gray.
Industrial, we just got a little fancy, a little bit.
Industrial used to be maybe possible, but that's not.
Here.
Right.
Here. Here.
I say keep it in there.
I don't, I don't have a good reason for injection on that. I just don't. But but clearly, I think we can agree on the the business districts makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Not residential areas, right? Is that what we're thinking? Okay. What's G A? I don't even know what G A is. Garden.
Garden Department.
It's Deer Hatch.
Yeah.
Deer Patrol or whatever.
And so we, so we're saying we want to keep a line under the use that says body art establishments and just mimic. The general or personal service establishment.
I would.
I would. Since finding out that tattoos were only made legal in Massachusetts, like, you know, three years ago.
I think they're.
It's like twenty years ago. It feels like we should.
Three years ago.
No, it was, but it was like twenty years ago. It wasn't that long ago. I was. I was exaggerating. It was like twenty years ago before that they were being legal, which is just bonkers. So let's just keep it as a line in there.
Now, the other thing that we're talking about is eliminating entirely section seven point two.
Almost against.
That we're.
Right, she got there in your home.
So one on one.
Right. She just. Many.
Yes.
Beautiful work.
Yes. Where's my. Seven, one, four. So we're gonna eliminate, yeah, okay. So then the associated, um, I'll eliminate a section and I'll, oh. I'm gonna have to do some renumbering. I got a number, uh, change that I'm gonna bring on anyway, if that works out well. What section?
Definitions.
Definitions. So. So what happens if we eliminate this entirely? That means that there's no. There's no additional regulations that will provide guidance. To a body art establishment.
Other than from Board of Health.
Yeah, well, yeah, right. And I I'll, of course, I don't understand Rick's, but I don't think he had any issue. Just to. Now that you mention it, I I this is completely unconnected with this, but the we had a a fellow come in last week. He's the the tattoo artist of choice for, I guess, the patriots. A lot of them, whatever the case is. He was gonna open up next door. Uh, at the, um, you know, right next to Russell's here.
Oh, yeah.
But he couldn't for two reasons.
Somebody lives upstairs.
Somebody lives upstairs and then we, and then we thought it was, it was. Rick was looking at it and he said, well, they're, they serve liquor at Russell's, but then we looked at it and I said, I I I don't think it means. Next to liquor. I mean, serving at the same establishment. So we. Yeah, right, right. So, I mean, people get. Who knows?
Yeah, right. Wow. If you're.
Yeah, so I think, so that real, that was a business that we couldn't. Bring in.
But if we, that's the central business district.
No, that's.
Right, so that would be allowed after this.
By right.
By right.
Yeah.
And there wouldn't be any specific operation hours. Other than a valid permit from the Board of Health. And whatever they, whatever they enforce.
They think it's a special permit.
Well, no, not if we're gonna go, if we're gonna mirror, um, the general, um. The, um. General personal services because there's. So they could go into the business, they could go into the central business, they could go into the mill, they could go to industrial but with Board of Appeals. Um, and that's probably a safety reason for that. But but those are by right. So that's what we would be doing, which is. So I want, right? How does everyone feel about that use table change first?
I kinda like it. That's what I was saying as a permit. And everything else.
Yeah. You like what felt is a permit?
I like industrial being still a permit and everything else has a right.
I I think it's a banner.
You like that too, though?
Yes, I just wanna add that we do need to refine the definition of body art establishment in section eleven if we're gonna make that change.
Yep, we'll get there. We'll get there. So so the first part was we decided on the use table. Seven point two, the proposal, as Jim pointed out and others, was just to get rid of it, remove seven point two. Which poses a problem for Bill because he's got to renumber the whole gap thing now. But I have to renumber, I have to renumber anyway because there's another, that's one of my things.
So leave it.
Reserved for future work.
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, I could, or maybe we could also pop in there real quick.
Oh, yeah.
Don't piss me off.
People would want that.
Yeah? So how does, does everyone feel good about just removing sev- seven point two?
Yeah.
I should be, yes.
I'm fine with it. Okay, so section eleven, is it the definitions?
Yes.
I want to use the definition. Yeah.
Sure. A location place for business that has been granted a permit by the board. Was a public or private where the practice practices of body art are performed, whether or not the profit. So who would strike out? Has been granted a permit by the board. How about, is it a location place business? With a public or private where the practices of body art are performed, whether or not the profit.
So we're striking out.
That has been granted.
Yeah, you're striking out adornment by permitting establishment and practitioners using. I don't know. Yeah. I love that word. Oh, you're talking about, you're talking about the definition of body art, not body art establishment.
Establishment.
Right, but but Chris just. Oh, sorry, I I went up to body art.
Yeah.
It says the practice, sorry, I, so let's, let's go back to that body art establishment. Okay. The location place, so we obviously removed granted, right?
Yeah.
The permit.
We might not do that, though.
Doing. Well, we need it because it's a use deal, right?
Yeah, leave that.
All right, well, maybe I'll. I mean, it's a location where body art is practiced.
So so then, then we need the body art definition.
Nice.
The body art definition is a little more cumbersome. The practice of, of.
It's okay.
Practice of physical body adornment by permitting establishments. So obviously we have to remove by some of the establishments. And practitioners using but not limited to the following techniques: body piercing, tattooing, branding, scarification. This definition is. Not include practices that are considered medical procedures by the Board of Registration in Medicine, such as implants under the skin, which are prohibited. I do like keeping that last part. I, because my big, my only comment about this whole thing is that. I I do want to make sure that it's clear that body art is not, is not about implants of various types. And that doesn't mean just breast implants. There's many different varieties of implanting on the body. That I I do not want to be associated with body art.
Right, I'm body piercing.
But, yeah, this includes piercing.
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so I would just like to have the opportunity to take a look at the state Board of Health regulations because. Or or maybe it's the Division of Professional Leasure, because I believe people that are doing this work need to. You know, become certified and registered with the state as well. And if that's the case, I'd just like to see how they define the terms so we could be consistent.
Are they allowed to define what that? Define what?
The term body.
Oh, term, okay.
Body art.
Well, I would also check with our Board of Health, yeah, they. In their. Hopefully it's the same as the state.
I hope so.
Because body piercing would be.
Yeah, um, so. So can, can, do we all agree to allow, we have to work with Bill on the language of that definition?
Absolutely.
Okay. So. Body piercing is part of it, we keep. So Bill, um, Bob is gonna work with you on this definition. All right. Or the proposal and they'll come back to the board and then we can all. Okay, and then just so we all remember, once we get that. Something closed. And we, I gotta bring upstairs to the select board of this real quick, so tell us, okay. So we should, we should. Just remember, they said that they trust us.
But you're right, they have to send it to contact. We have to send it to them for them to send it to us.
I don't want any more. I'm just one guy.
Bob, I just looked it up and I found state model regulation for body art establishments. So that should be easy.
That's gonna be very.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be, that'd be interesting.
Model regulations are always handy to find.
Okay, I think, I think that covers that.
Okay.
What's, sorry, what's table A?
Table A is, that's a huge table.
And the other items here that listed are the, the the development agreement. Do we wanna talk about the development agreement now, since I think we have a reasonable proposal?
Uh, you don't mean the.
Section nine or five.
You mean, okay, oh, yeah, yeah, the reduced area requirements, yes, yes. So the section nine point four.
Excuse me, can I, can I say something? I, I, I was just wondering if there's a chance where I might be able to ask you about some of the, um, the, the regulations, the zoning bird protective laws that you're going over? A couple of things that you might wanna look at. I don't know if this is the appropriate time.
Um, Brad, uh, how about, just go ahead, Brad. Uh, but first, Brad, please, I, I.
Very body art, right?
Yeah, identify yourself and address, please.
Sure, Brad Schultz, eleven Glendale Street.
Yeah, um, yeah, go ahead, Brad, give us your.
Sure, um, yeah, on, um, on table, uh, three point one, point two, the use of regulations in residential uses. Um, I, I'm interested in what you're, um, if you're interested in, um, amending or changing the live work dwelling unit portion. And there's a definition also on page one oh two.
Give us a minute.
Can you say that one more time in section three point one point two?
Right, which is on, I believe, page three.
Unit, yep.
And then on page, then page one oh two, there's a definition.
Now, what is your thought, Brad, on changing it?
I'm, I'm not asking necessarily of changing it. I'm just wondering if you, if you think it needs to be changed? And sort of weighing in on, um, on what you think the, um, uh, the benefits or criteria, or if you, you think it's a, as good as is.
Is, is this in context to the home-based business?
Yes, it is. It certainly is. Uh, which is, which is in front of the in front of us right now.
So, so Crenshaw, what, what's your thoughts?
My only thought is, the title really should be work lift, because that definition requires primary work purpose, secondary residential purpose. It's the complete opposite of a home occupation, which is primary residential and secondary business. But the current version that we've used, we, I think we've used it correctly. I mean, it came up a month or two ago.
Yeah, was that the one in Main Street?
Yeah, it was on Main Street. I think it ended up being, you know, most of the space was workspace, and then there was a little bit of live space, which is, is the way it's supposed to be. So I don't see any issues with, other than it really needs to highlight the fact that it's mostly work in secondary life. Always.
And right now, it's allowed in the business and the HCI and its planning board under the central business.
We looked at this in, uh, twenty twenty, we all, we, we redid the, the definition a little bit. We didn't think about it as the work lift. That's, that's a good point with it. And it just, it came up the other day, or at a zoning board the other night. Do you, but right now, we just have it in, um, we have it, it's, it's by right in business. And, and planning board, oh, because central business. And so we, yeah, we didn't do on business, it was central business, yeah.
I mean, the, the original discussion, in fact, mine was turning the mill into artists' law, so.
Right.
You know, they have their studio there and they also live you know, another part of it or something, but.
I definitely, I, I don't. Yeah.
Seems fine the way it is, but.
Does say yes for business district. Are we considering? I mean, would we be expanding that to be yeses in other places or permits in other places?
I wouldn't think so, but some, no, I, 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 I think that what now, remember when we did this, because it was mostly all of us, that we, we, I'm trying to remember what we changed. But we put the prime, that was gonna be the primary use, or the, the, the primary use was business. And residential was ancillary or secondary. But we were talking at time about the mill, because that, that would be enticing, because it was also, I remember the milk can produce uh, housing by right, if it's one bedroom, I think. And we thought that that would be I still think we would use it. But that's right, that may be what we changed, too. I don't remember if it was allowed, but.
Yep. And all our discussion, when we, when we have the intention that it works, and there was concern about kind of storefront, whoops, if you will. So we can walk the line, the people are ready. And, um, so I'm wondering if that's something we wanna consider adding, you know, to the definition, um, a provision that says, you know, the place has to be open to the public, so we would you know, so we could leave the message. It's not just, you know, instructing the apartment, you know, downtown name it as a store or, and a storefront that nobody isn't welcoming to.
So didn't we put something like that in our decision?
Yes, I think we did, but let's do this, um. Brad, uh, Brad, I, I wanna use the options on the list, and then I do wanna get back to what we have for the actual agenda. And what this planning board can do is consider it on their own time.
If you should, also, if you should be a list, Brad, I can, I can just, um, this board has had a couple of items brought up to it already, which is tattoos, too. So, and then we can schedule it and, and, you know, for the research, but it's, it's a big help. I, I can speak on that with the board for that.
Sure, so, so, so one of the other, the one of the other issues is, a, as you know, um, um, Mr. Crenshaw and I are working with the, uh, working on the home-based business um, bylaws, changing them as well, or looking into, into crafting them. And so a lot of this falls right into it as well. So a lot of my questions are a, a, about that. So wondering where we're at with all of those things. Has everybody on the board been able to read our proposal so far? That, that bill has submitted, and I think the bills have submitted?
Yes, and we're gonna, we're gonna get to that in a minute.
Oh, okay. I'm, I'm sorry if I'm ahead of myself here.
It's okay, Brad. Um, so then, how about this, um, you, you're welcome to send one over. You want to build them, sir, and the board will obviously consider it all.
Okay, great, thank you.
So let's get back to nine point four point five.
Okay. So, stop, it was introduced at the prior meeting, and it's trying to update the section of nine four five where the O P developer can ask for a higher density of, of units. The original file, when written, had required affordable housing, and that also a commitment to procuring vacant space correctly. And it's become a little outdated, because we have now inclusionary zoning provision, which requires affordable housing very much all the time, so it's not giving the town anything extra for the concession of a higher density. So the suggestion was that, you know, some of those units not be simply eighty percent AMR affordable, be either more affordable, sixty percent. And that's the language we talked about last time, and that hasn't changed. What it changed was, uh, our discussion on you know, what else this provision might offer as a benefit. And, well, uh, provided some suggestions for language. One is expanding on second page, in section B, would be expanding the commitment to make a donation of land for recreational purpose to something broader than that. So it wouldn't have to be, you know, give us an acre of land. It could be, you know, help make our existing acre better. And so this text provides more alternatives for that, although it still has the same objective of approving open space and recreational experiences. Um, and then the third thing, number three is, um, you know, page three or four, all that stuff crossed out in red, is just a bunch of, of things that could have been added to the development agreement, but don't really add much value to it. It's just we're reiterating facts that are in a special market. And they don't really need to go into development, because they, they aren't special. They're covered elsewhere, but, um, there was a, the, uh, suggestion that, that be simplified to what is now section A, B, C, and D, which just generally gives the the person who's anticipating doing a development, coming to the planning board, asking for higher density, giving them idea of what stuff they might be into. And it just tells them, you know what, you might you might need to mitigate something, like, uh, you work on town land, and you might, and then number C is a provision for, well, you know, if you're gonna have commercial space, you need to use it. Otherwise, you gotta let us. Um, and so that language actually is pretty much unchanged from, uh, the, the last discussion. So most of the new stuff here is, um, in section two, uh, yeah. And just expanding the, uh, commitment to the developer to give a donation that supports open space and recreational activity rather than simply providing land.
Thanks, Bill. And Bob, is there anything I didn't work on? Is there anything you'd like to add upon?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to give us, give us, give the towns some more flexibility, and also to ensure that if it is a donation, that the donation which we use for open space on recreation, not for other purposes. And that the town would have the flexibility to be able to use that money as a matching funds for state grants for related work. So if there was, you know, accessibility directives, which is we could improve access to recreation lands, for example, by, you know, applying for the state grant and using the money in the CPA as a matching. So it was just, in, I'm sorry, it's an opportunity to just expand our flexibility.
Where, where's that discussed in this?
It's in, um, so is a second change in B. I find.
Yeah, okay, B three.
Yeah.
So the question, the one question I had was, we struck on, on, on the, the part about, um, making, uh, using our formula, we have a plan of regulations to establish a value, um, so that there's a, a level of certainty. Somebody comes in, wants to do a project, they know how much we're talking about. So like, we, we put in a couple of years ago, remember?
I don't believe we did.
We didn't?
No, we replaced that text with slightly different version, but on the second page would be, you know, agreement from the developer for a donation in an amount as prescribed to the planning board, right?
So are we using, uh, so we're gonna use the same, we could word that to be clear, that, that is prescribed and, okay. But that's what you're, that's what you're talking about.
That's the attack, it's, yeah, it's still references, I mean, we could we could cite where on the regs, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, I forget if it has a specific number of locations, but.
Yeah, okay, all right, that makes sense. Maybe we just, we could just make that a little clearer. I, that's one thing, in my experience, that has made all the difference in the world for that passage. We did that maybe three years ago. If people understand it, what they're getting, if you don't want it, then don't come for it. But then, but if you do want it, here's what you're gonna expect.
It's gonna be awful to bring classification to applicants and spell it out and, and, you know, in section XXX, whatever is necessary. Um, cool. Any, any others? Bill, um, Bill, Crenshaw, and Bob, anything else to add? I have one question. It's on, it's on section two, it's the highlighted language on the second page.
Yeah.
It says, in place of some or all of the monetary donation, the development provides materials and construction services of value approved by a permanent vote of planning board. It, you know, I get how we can get to, what, what is the monetary value of a land donation? Like, that's an assessed sort of value, I assume, right? So I understand there's obviously a best practice or some type of formula to come up with land donation. Um, materials can just be shown by purchase of receipt, but I don't know how to I, I don't know how to determine the, the monetary value of construction services. And I don't know if we need to you know, add clarity to that. I, I like the concept. I mean, if they're going to do something in open space from a construction standpoint, but you can come up with any type of value of what that is.
Ah, I agree with Rob. I mean, the reason that and the photograph right after it is added is because you know, the current regulations just say, give us land. And we've really been saying, no, give us access to it. And you buy the facilities on it. So it's trying to go there, and you're exactly right, you know. How do I, how do I charge the service? Developer says, oh, it's gonna cost exactly how much I would have to give you in cash. What a coincidence.
Yeah, I like, I really like the concept, but I just wanna make sure that we have control over what the value of construction services is. And I don't know, I don't necessarily know how to do that.
Well, I mean, that's why I was trying to say, you know, the, the, uh, section of value approved by a permanent vote of planning board. The planning board actually has to have a separate vote saying, yes, we concur that this project is or is equivalent of the money amount prescribed in the regulations, which is like ten thousand two hundred a year. And we just have to assess. I, I presume that, you know, the town engineer would say, yeah, it's.
Well, yeah, and, and it may end up benefiting us too, because it, it, depending on what the, the, the work is and, and who's doing, you know, the, the mitigating, that may be worth it for them to do it, but we may be getting more for ours, depending on the work. Like, we did that, we did that with a sewer somewhere. We're so.
Would, would, could it be, maybe it's a little too specific, but what, what about if we added something that says that, I, you know, like, as confirmed by some third party uh, es, you know, estimator or engineer or something.
My third party, why not DPW?
It could be DPW or the town engineer.
DPW, town engineer, something, I don't know. I don't know if that language is necessary, because I agree, I, I, you're right, it does say by, by a vote of planning board. But that's my only comment, otherwise, I, I think this is I, I, I've been following along. The speaker I thought. So maybe you both are all.
Yeah. Uh, I, I, I think we, we could probably if, if we get this tweaked, the, the little two or three things there, I could get it ready, we could get it up to I can get up to, I can get up to zoning, uh, the slideboard, you know, right away. We could advertise it. And remember, we don't have to close, we don't have to have the hearings completed by the planning board to get it on the warrant, and it's still to change after a little bit. So, I, I think we should try to get this one on.
Yeah, but keep in mind, we really, really don't want it changed after the warrant, right? That's gonna be super hard, Chris.
Wow, yeah, right, right, yeah.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta come up, yeah.
It's, it's, we don't wanna do it. But, 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 um, yeah, I think if we wanna try to do it, we.
Do we do, do we wanna add language about DPW approving the amounts or not?
It's so hard with that.
I would do it.
Of value approved by a permanent vote of planning board with recommendations provided by town staff, no.
Well, if you, you know, the vote, the, the, the.
The value.
Everybody's gonna wanna hear it from DPW.
The value, a value of, of, by DPW and by an affirmative board of planning board?
You can say it now and verify it.
Don't, Bob, give us some good one.
We need the language, because we're not asking them for approval. You know, we will confirm with. Because we're not asking them for approval. Now, we will confirm with them. And then we'll say, yeah, that's reasonable. We reach out to.
Oh, there he is right there.
And.
No, you don't. No, 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 no.
You're in the zoning ordinance now. You're in it.
My sense is that you take your, it itself.
Okay.
You know, if they're going to come in, you're going to give us a message. Will you ask Justin and be intrigued, you know, it's just the monologue.
So we don't need to regulate this to them.
Your words. Okay.
I, let's, let's move forward, Bill. Let's get this.
Okay. And that is, all right, Bill, can you send me your final copy of this and I'll use it? Or do you want to?
You did.
No, well, I mean, I'm not sure this is. Hundred percent formatted. For town meeting, but.
No.
It's certainly good enough to.
Get to the select board.
Go to the select board and also to give the town.
Okay, well, all right, if you, do you want to make the changes that you have and and just send us something, whatever you have in there, or do you want me to know?
Okay, we have changes.
We have, you're, you're going to, you're going to keep me happy with the, the.
I I think you should send it to Bill, and since Bill is staff, Bill should make the one final confirm. This looks good. On section, section one E on the second page. Second line, it says agreement, blah, blah, blah. And the amount as prescribed, under regulations.
Site location.
Site section. So that's, that's the only change.
I also have, I'll talk to you about this later, but I have trouble figuring out a number of this. It's some subsections.
Yes, it's, I I can fix that.
Very hard.
That's why I give it to Bill, that Bill answered it too, because if there's problems.
Yeah, I think we're just saying, replace nine, four, five with this text. Because we don't say replace this paragraph.
Yeah, if we do the entirety, we just say replace it entirely. So we've done before. And it's looking split where, but the problem is when we do that, not the problem, the thing we have to remember when we do that, though, because we did it with Katie's. We're right pushing it up with the water. We have to make something that shows. In the comments, because somebody, yeah, somebody will ask, what did you change?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we can set up the show.
Yeah.
But as far as the thing that goes to select for, you could just say, we can just give them the new.
Yeah.
Text. But we're giving the whole deal to do.
Okay, so that is section nine point four point five.
Basically done, guys.
Okay, nine, four, five. So you will send me that?
I will.
Okay. And then I'm just going to go ahead and I'm going to get, I'm going to fire it up, bring it upstairs. And you guys will, you guys will do what you do, and I'll advertise.
Yes, yes, let's get this on tap for town warrant. Both of those body art and section nine four.
Are you going to look at, at state rights for body art first?
Yes, so there's some work to be done, but let's get them both on the path.
Right.
For town one.
But it's not that there.
Just timing wise. Are we able to authorize? The body art to be submitted with the mixed view nine, four, five at the same time?
I try it.
Acknowledging that, you know, we'll, we'll take Bob's best shot at the definitions that if we tweak it. Hearing process, we can do that to.
Yeah, do it.
Yeah. Okay, I'll get both of those, because I'm going to have mine too, the the one, the numbering that I want to get, which is. You know, not particularly interesting, but, but, okay, that's good. That's good. That'll keep me, keep me employed through next week.
Okay, so we took care of the, as Bill Crenshaw said, the easier ones. The last one is the home occupation by law. Bill or Billy, you wanted to see us the status and where that is. How we can help.
The last I saw of it, the preliminary draft was distributed to both boards with instructions for the board members to review and provide comments to their chairs. And the chairs to consolidate comments. They come back. I don't know what happened.
I received no comments. I don't think I've received comments.
That seems like a long.
We got some from Megan.
Okay, did anyone on the board just send any comments?
Bob recently sent.
I can either.
Super good, so maybe she sent it to you.
I missed the thought. I sent them right to Bob, because that he would distribute to whoever.
But I'm also curious if. Brad has heard from his chair at zoning, whether they have all their comments to their chair.
They asked for, they also, I forgot that they, they, the other night. They asked for an update to Brad. They're basically the same that we are, so I. Maybe it's time for another, let me back up. I think it's, it's, it's pretty, pretty good. I think that. The only hiccup is this thing about commercial vehicles. Bill and I were talking about that, Brad, recently, but I don't know that this is. I think personally, we need to, we need to plow the field for this one. Before we go, I wouldn't rush into this one this fall. It may, it may not be winter.
Maybe, probably the winter. I would, I would like, I'd like the chair of the zone, zone board to advise on that too, how urgent it is. So. The zoning board chair says that we can. It's okay to not shoot, not work towards the call meeting, then I'm fine with that. We are doing this on their behalf, so I, I do want. Their input on urgency.
Fair enough.
And let them drive the bus. We are here to help however we can. It's, but it's really, I want the zoning board to really drive that urgency.
Understood.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So if they tell me it's urgent, that's fine. If they tell me it's better to. That it can't wait until the next town meeting, I'm fine with that too.
Understood.
If you remind that they're like the next town meeting is by January. I I would not mind if relatively soon. A version was submitted for public consumption.
Yes, I agree.
And just post it and say, you know, you want to send your comments and, you know.
Yeah.
And we've learned a lot from that.
I think, I think we should work towards, if the chair of the zoning board is okay with that, I I agree with that. I think we should work towards that. I'm happy to push through, though, if they, if he really wants to make this happen, but I agree with Bill Crenshaw's point. So it sounds like Bob had his comments, none of the other board members. Is there any?
I have a draft email that I just saw to you from June twenty first that I never sent, so I will. I was like, I know I wrote something, and it's just sitting right there in my draft.
Your dog ate my whole.
I, well, I, I. So I'll, I'll send it along.
I will. If you could, if Bob, if you could send me those comments and then I'll look at Natalie's, and I'll try to see what I can do to merge and incorporate. And we'll get this process completed.
I, I think, like, my comments will generate a conversation about a couple of key issues.
So for the next planning board meeting, we'll put this forth on the forefront to finalize the planning board's discussions and recommendations and processes. And I'll be prepared with merge comments and direction from myself. Yep.
Great, great.
So that covers home occupation by law, section three point two point five.
Brad, is there anything you'd like to add on that, on that topic now?
I want to go over to you.
And a tattoo. How can you hear us? I don't hear.
Hear it, right, from Moody. Yeah.
And that completes our agenda for the meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Did you, I, I, did you guys, Alexa, share one of that?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it's.
Chair, voice chair.
It's Chris and Bob.
All right, I was muted. Whoops.
Wow.
Chris and Bob?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know. Better, sorry, Brad, go ahead. One last chance.
I, I, I'm sorry, yeah, to, to follow up on Bill Crenshaw's question that he had for me is, yes, we, as. Looking forward, we really would like to push these things through as fast as we could. I'm sure. The chairman will agree with that, but we really could use some guidance in terms of updating home-based businesses in particular. Because it's come to the forefront and it's difficult to deal with what we have right now.
Okay, does that mean that? Your opinion is that the, if we have a January town meeting, that that's the best option to shoot for, or do you, is, do you think the board?
Well, I don't know if that's, that's my decision to make, but.
No, but I'm serious to be discussed it.
Yeah, that's, I have not discussed it with the board. We haven't really had an opportunity to discuss it other than through emails. And so I'd like to, I'd be curious as to what the board has to say about that.
We are, we are running out of time, of course, so.
Thank you, man.
Well, if you members could follow up with the zoning board, should care and see how, this level of urgency is being done as we speak. Thank you, thank you, Bill.
Brad, we, we're running out of time for you. We're running out of time for articles to have here.
Well, thanks, Bill.
Okay, planning board, when, when director of. What updates you have for us, Bill?
You know it all. I've got, I don't know, I don't have anything, I don't have anything special that I can recall.
We did get the grant for the modern border initiative.
Yeah, well, that was, that we got, they're going to start that. Yeah, that's true.
And that's coming.
Second, that's, that, that'll be, it'll be actually the fourth grant.
And don't we have someone assigned from?
We do. We have one Chris Pashel. These complete streets, he works with, uh. Little work with us, which one, these streets, but that's his, these complete street diagram, make me see. So I think that would be very. And they're gonna. I just got an email from, that's from Chris, that's our Chris, that's how you do, and he's going to, they're going to be in contact at Roll the Stone to make sure. Actually, I wouldn't hurt it. Then change.
Any other updates?
Unfortunately, Janelle is off to school. And I tried to. She leaves on Friday, Thursday's her last day, so we're going to really miss her. Good, great, great person. I tried to make a call to University of Mass as her, say, I feel her here. It's Janelle, I can't come after all, I like my job too much. But so, but the, and, but we are going to be down, right now, we're down at Health Agent. We're down, we're down, super duper, you know, admin helps me a lot. So I'm going to be going with. Because I can. And Julia is. Conservation's been on the overdrive, as you know, we have the, what happened over Millman. We have a spill. This spill. Sewer. DEB's over there, it's a big deal. But I mean, they're, they're getting it. Dressed, but it's, you can imagine. Millman, by the turn of which building, it was the seventh, it was, didn't have anybody in it. Which is good.
The interior. See the interior.
Was it going over there?
I think it did go over.
Yeah, it did.
Yeah. And it, it's, it's, so that's, I haven't seen, I haven't seen neither hair nor hide of Julie for two days.
I think it's Julie.
Yeah, that's, oh, yeah, it's, oh, was it good? Oh. And it was right, yeah, oh, my goodness. So the state's over there now. But she's not helping me on planning at the moment because she's. Full time.
Bill, let's figure out how to turn this thing up here.
What's that? Sewage bill.
Figure out how to turn it up.
That's how you turn, if state turn chicken, food, chicken soup, so it works.
There's enough period.
I like it. So this is.
Wait, how was I supposed to hear about the sewage bill? I wanted to know right after, I mean.
So Chris, there was another thing in our board docs, looking on our thing about the chapter land being offered as first of people to the town.
Yeah.
About Bill Muntzer, can you?
Yeah, no.
So the notification of the chapter land being offered, the eighteen acre thing.
Yeah.
I have my floors.
Yes.
It's like, if you look on floors, O V R S, three rivers, God Ward. So I actually get sewage and gas back river. Has been avoided in May. Every user should avoid contact downstream of the waste water, time back to.
That's the answer. It wasn't the town that did it this time.
I'm sorry, Billy, you asked me what?
The notification of the chapter land.
Yeah.
I'm curious, maybe whatever, it's eighteen acres.
Bill Muntzer, can you, can you explain what Bill Crenshaw's.
Yes. There is a. There was a. Uh, when, I don't know the exact criteria, but the town is notified when there's sale. Land that I believe includes a certain, yeah, bumper, but so is there a certain amount of what ones?
No.
No.
Landowners have opportunities where if the land is horticultural or.
That's one of those.
They can get reduced taxes on it, but it means that when they sell it. For a change of use to be developed is how, they have to give the town first what they're going to use.
That's one of those.
Perfect. So, but we're talking eighteen acres in Maynard, five acres in Sudbury, immediately south of Mysteria Lake. It's like.
Right, that's right, it's the, it's a cutting, the cutting property.
Well, they actually have two pieces of land, one sold and then. It has semi-concept for five housing units, but what does this really does?
The, um, it, it, well, there's, yeah, it is planning and it's interesting correspondence. Because in the correspondence I got for this, it said, it, under the game of statute, you forward it to your. They gave a list of, you know, boards and and committees. Now, so I, I wrote to town council before I did it. I said, well, I mean, I'll forward it to them, but is this saying that, you know? You know, there's not funds to do this necessarily. And while I'm not with my department. It's, but would it, and and that's, so they said, well, you know, that's the idea is that, you know, other. Board committees may have things like that, but I don't know the specifics of this, like the, the cost, can't remember. But. I'm, I'm a little vague on that one.
It's a million forty nine thousand for the whole thing, although that includes five acres of Sudbury, so our cost is less than that.
How much?
One million forty nine thousand.
That's all right.
But.
That's easy enough to compare.
It actually is.
Well, yeah.
C P C has access to it. C P C can borrow. We have funding and other things. If we really wanted it, we could make it happen. Timing wise, it works out perfectly down here.
What's, what's the benefit?
You preserve eighteen acres of. Forested land. In perpetuity, which, you know. Now, the other option, of course, you know, much of that land is probably wet. Be usable by a developer and they probably want to do it in town anyway, but. I think it merits a conversation, but.
Any other interest, do you have any applicants coming up that you can, they know?
No, you know, I, I think we have a couple of small things, but we're on this weird change with zoning board, zoning board, I can't keep up. We've got, I've got like, I got like three applications last week. It's totally, yeah, I really like patio. We've got, I've got like, I got like three applications last week, and it's totally, yeah, I really like patios and, and smaller stuff, but I, I don't know what happened, I've never had it like this. But with us, uh, no, because, um, and, you know, it's, it's just as well, because we've got the powder mill starting, we've got a lot of internal stuff for us to do, you know?
All right, so next meeting, let's, let's, um, put the home occupation by law on the forefront for our discussion purposes. I'd also like an item to discuss the finalize, I think that finalized, but we, we did not completely finish our downtown Odoey district discussion. And I, and if you could, if we have no other items, we have no, no other applicants, please put those two items for discussion.
Tell me the other one, we had another D I B discussion, not, not the one that, I mean, we're getting the other one, ready to go this one, right?
Right, but I mean, um, the, it was the.
We were gonna do an evaluation.
That's right, we, the master plan said that we would review the downtown Odoey district, and I recall that Julia had a few items that she was looking at, particularly boundaries and property designations of that sort, that she wanted to check out first.
Okay.
So it'd be helpful to know what the status of that is, so that we can work towards finalizing that review. Which I, which I do want to memorialize in a memo or whatever type of document that town staff uses.
To, to identify?
Identify the review, it's to cover, to discuss the review itself, but also identify any changes that we want to make.
Yeah, okay, I'll get, I'll, I'll make sure Julia, uh, gets, you wanna know what she has for specific, um, concerns and.
I'm happy to discuss, when Julia had about two of them.
Yeah, that, that might be good.
First, when do you expect an application on that, uh, property, we talked about on the, uh, your assortment.
I don't know, um, I think the develop, the developer would, would like to start an application yesterday.
Oh, cool.
It's really on the, it's really on the town and the select board, I believe, Bob, to finalize the agreements. I'm pretty sure the developer is going to.
Oh, come on, call it within the early fall.
They're, they're raring to go, is my understanding, Bob, right? That's my impression I got.
Yeah, well, there's a waiting suit, because they wanna move forward with the cannabis facility.
Yeah.
So, that's the.
And they have, uh, they have a sort of phased construction approach that they shared with us, obviously, it's not a part of the development agreement or any agreement for me, but they they made a, uh, a phased construction approach that allows for development to occur while first building some establishments to get a foothold on the property.
Does they indicate what their, what their priorities were?
The marijuana facility, the, the the Riverside Cafe, and I believe one phase of residential. I think the residential is going to occur in two phases, maybe, I forget, I, I, I don't fully remember, Jim. But, um, it's something that they will need to obviously share with the planning board during their application process.
Well, I suspect that they won't, they kept moving as quickly as possible, because financing for those such projects are gonna start getting smaller and smaller, I believe.
I agree, and also they've already put money into this, so you know how it goes, Jim.
You know how it goes, but.
Time, time is eating away at that.
So, I'm just gonna sit on that money and don't go.
Yeah. Anything else, planning board?
Uh, the one, the other, the only article I have coming in, or the only item will be signage for, um, Maynard Crossing, not get too excited, but we're going to smaller signs rather than, they want to, that's a change. Rick asked, um, Rick, uh, building commissioner asked them to, cuz they're gonna run out of signs, and it's, but they wanna, we're gonna go to the tier three signs permanently, and eliminate some of the others, so, other than that.
The, our agreement stated very clearly the number of signs they can have on the property, and like Bill said, they're running out of signs, they're running out of, they're bumping up against the total number of allowed signs that are allowed on the property, which I know.
We, the signage was, was, when it was done, um, it's a weird one, but you'll see, it, it makes sense, what, i- i- if you look at the, um.
We're, we're just getting ahead of it so that they don't have to come to us last minute, so I instructed them to get ahead of this. What I don't want is them to have an applicant come in, and then they don't have the sign that's allowed for them to use. So get out of this, talk, talk, give us a proposal, we'll discuss it. All right, Jim, you wanna do this, the honors?
I would be more than happy to, uh, I would move that we close tonight's meeting.
I second it. All in favor? Five zero to close the meeting, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you. All right, guys, bye, thank you, Bob. On this?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, much appreciated. Never know, yeah.
All right, bye.
Bye, bye.